Thirty-seven days ago, on August the 28th, you, the voters, the city of Anderson, spoke. You spoke loud and clear that you wanted a more cooperative, unified, and practical city government. Well, today, that process continues. And I'm asking each of you guys in Ward 2 and Ward 4 to get out, finish what you started. The battle is not over yet. You must continue to work for this change. And even once this is all said and done with, it's time for us to work together for all of the wonderful things that we said we're gonna do, okay? And one more thing, even after this is said and done with, please keep us in your prayers. This is not a very simple job. I'm seeing these things already. And a little bit of authority can corrupt the best man, or woman. But anyway, please keep us in your prayers. We'll continue to make change. And on behalf of Mayor-elect Von Stewart and Councilman J.J. Jenkins, I want to welcome you guys.
Good evening. First, I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank the great organizations that put this together. My name is Shefton Gussen, and I'm looking to be the Ward 2 City Councilman, to represent Ward 2. I want to thank the community for coming out and actually having the energy to stick with us during this time. I'm born and raised here in Anderson, Alabama, and my passion is here within this community and for this city. I sign out there to be a City Councilman due to the fact that we need stable and genuine leadership. I'm a professional here in this city. I wake up every morning, and I go to work, and I represent a community. And I represent a community in a positive way. What I'm looking to do is, as City Councilman, I'm looking to be put in the positions to where I can represent a community who wants progress, who wants to represent moving forward. My name is Shefton Gussen. Please elect me Ward 2 City Councilman. Thank you.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing out there? I want to thank you, first of all, for coming out. Thank you for taking the time because you see the importance of what we do. I'm David E. Reddick, and I want to be your Ward 2 City Councilman. My attitude, my aptitude, I'm a servant. I served this country in the United States Navy. And after serving in the military, I came back. And the first thing I did when I got out is I came and served my community. I've been involved and active in this community. And now, I want to serve you as your Ward 2 City Councilman. This October 9th election is a pivotal point, and it's a good chance to place the right people in office to make forward progress, to make the right change, and to be the right and ready leadership that we need, that's in the city, that's in the cusp of greatness. You know, there was a study done. They took the car processionary counterparts, and they lined them up across a vase. And one follows the other by nature. And these things followed each other. They worked. They followed each other until they all fell over dead from exhaustion and starvation. The thing is, the food that they eat was right in the middle of the vase. We've seen work and work and work. But we need the kind of work, the kind of motion, the kind of movement that's gonna bring change, that's gonna be positive, and that's been thought out and careful. I don't want to be a processionary. I don't want to be a follower. I want to be a leader for this city to lead us to the nutrients that it takes to achieve the greatness that we all possess in ourselves. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. My name is Millie Harris. I run for City Council for Ward 4. Why do I think I would be an asset to Anderson? You've all heard it before. I've lived here 38 years. I lived in Golden Springs. I raised my children here. I had a successful teaching career. I have given back to this community. Yada, yada, yada. I know you're tired of hearing it, but who am I really? Actually, I'm a child of educators. My son's giving me this, like, "Mom, you're talking too loud." I have a bad habit of doing that. My mother and my father were both teachers. They traveled many, many times throughout the state of Alabama because my daddy was always changing jobs. But no matter what, no matter what the difficulty, growing up on the poverty level, living the way we lived, going from town to town, "Never Stop Learning" was always his motto. And that is my motto today. And no matter what the issue, I will get to the bottom of it. I will research the issue. I know you watched the debates on TV last night. How many of you changed channels? Or how many of you just stayed with one channel? I had to hear every point of view. And that's the way I will conduct myself as City Councilperson. My father was not afraid of standing up for what was right. Once he knew the facts that he had done his homework, I too, when I know the facts, I've done my homework, I will stand up for what is right. But to come full circle of who I really am today is this person sitting back here, my husband. He taught me at an early age that I could do, I married when I was a child, y'all. He made me go back to college. He taught me, "I can do it." You all, I can do it if you give me the chance. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marcus Donio, present Councilman for Ward 4. Many of you guys already know my story. I was born here in Anderson in 1960. My mother left here in 1962 to go to Los Angeles to raise me for better opportunity. While there in Los Angeles from '62 to '89, I started growing up in the city and started liking sports, started playing football and basketball, and started watching it on television. We had two great teams in Los Angeles. We had USC, UCLA, great programs, winning programs. But on Saturdays mornings with my friends, I would sit and watch football. And they would cheer for USC and UCLA. But I would cheer for Alabama and Auburn. And they wondered why? Because I was from Anderson, Alabama. That was my home. When they would lose Alabama or Auburn, I would cry, not knowing that I would move back here in 1989 with my family, my wife and two sons. Looking for a safe and friendly environment, we found it here in Anderson. It gave us hope and stability. And if I'm elected on October 9th, I want to give hope back to the citizens of Ward 4 and stability back to the city. Thank you.
This question is about the Anderson Police Department. Generally, can you discuss your opinions about the Anderson Police Department, the job that they do, their needs? And specifically, are you in favor of increased pay and other incentives for the Anderson Police Department?
The job they do, the pay they make, and what I think about them? I think we got a good police department, all things considered. You know, I did some ride-alongs with our police department and seeing the work that they do, the dedication that they have, it inspired me. It made me feel good about my police department. They explained a lot of things to me that made what they do make more sense. So one thing I would do is try to get the leaders to do those ride-alongs and things like that so we get a better understanding of our police department and what they do and what that means. I'm absolutely in favor of increasing pay. And I'm also in favor of increasing the communication that we have in our community to our police department. I would love to take police officers fresh out the academy and place them in a home inside this city and let them live for a year to two rent-free. And as they get to know the community and give them small jobs to do around the community so they can get to know the community. I'd love to see our police department coaching a football or softball team so that they get to know our kids. So as our kids grow, they know the police officer, and the police officer knows them. Because that's the big difference between a good city relationship with a police department and a bad one. Is in a good relationship, the citizens know the officer, and the officer knows the city. And because they know each other, that creates a respect, a mutual respect for each other and an admiration that we need to develop in this city. I would love to be that change agent to bring that and foster that attitude into our city with our police department. Thank you.
Since I made the decision to run for this office, I have talked with various police officers. I've talked with the current Captain McGrady. I've talked with the previous Captain Dryden. I have a deep appreciation for the job that they do. They are going into the community. They are trying to bridge the gap. They're trying to gain trust. They're also got an officer who is going into Anderson High School. They were re-initiating that plan to help those children gain trust in the police. The police cannot do it alone. I really applaud the efforts of the citizens of Rocky Hollow by taking back their community. All communities need to follow suit and support our police. Take back, reinstate neighborhood watches. Do everything we can to support our police. It's not that they don't make mistakes. Everyone makes mistakes. But they need our support. It takes two years for a police officer to be actually trained and be out on the street. By the time they get trained, many of them are leaving for better pay. We need to at least meet the pay that they receive in surrounding areas such as Oxford to be able to retain them. We need to do all we can to support our police. Our crime rate is of concern to most people. And we got to have, while we can solve the problem eventually with education, initially, we have got to have the support of our police to keep us safe. Thank you.
First of all, our police department is underpaid and short-handed. When you look at the average among the state, we want the lowest pay in the state. And I believe we need to build up the morale of our police officers by rewarding them. I mean, self-esteem is built. Production is at a high. I believe also, we need to help them in the community. When they go out to the community, matter of fact, about two months ago, I went out with real men. And we walked with the police officers. And after we was walking to the community, there's a fear, there's a wall there, that the police are the bad guy. But they really there to protect you from the bad guy. And so I think we have to change the image of our police department. And it's based around, really, to be honest with you here this evening, is what other people are saying. And if you ask who's saying it, you're gonna find out it's the one who's committing the crime who's saying it. So I believe we need to support them. Thank you.
Our police department's number-one goal is to make sure that each and every one of us is safe, no matter which ward that we live in. So that makes them our number-one asset. But they're the least and best of what I said that we have here in this community. What's happening is that we're losing good officers to other communities. What we have to do is, we have to address the issue. The solution is, we have to invest more in it. We've made a vested interest in providing them with the new state-of-the-art facility. What I think we should do is, we have to increase their pay. I know firsthand, I've been a deputy coroner for over four years. So I've worked firsthand with all type of first responders. And I know that in order for our police officers to bridge their financing, in order to make a good living and provide for their families, they have to work two and three off-duty jobs just to bridge their financing because they're so underpaid. So what we have is an obligation and what we have as a commitment as a community and also as a government official. Let me a City Councilman, I will be an advocate to ensure that we do have police officers who are happy to get up in the morning and they're proud to say that they are a police officer and they do help to protect and serve the citizens of Anderson. We must invest in our officers. Thank you.
What strategies and programs would you like to implement to bring jobs and reduce unemployment in your ward?
We have simply got to increase revenue. And one way to increase revenue is to take the property where the middle school is located right now. I don't think anybody sitting here believes that that was a good decision a long time ago to put a middle school where it is. But if the city can come together with a school board and arrive at a reasonable price for this 75 acres, I do believe that this could be our salvation. It could be the retail Mecca for Anderson. It could be our own Oxford Exchange. We also have a huge, excuse me, our own Anderson Exchange. We also have a huge opportunity with ecotourism. And this trail that is going to be completed into downtown and it stops at the Motor and Buses Transportation Center will eventually go out to Coldwater. We have a tremendous potential here for job creation with this industry, the ecotourism industry. We also have a great potential at McClellan to develop it as a retirement community. As these residents age, they're going to need services, health care. It is just amazing what this McClellan, the future could be for us. Also, the research and development park at McClellan, the plan that was just approved. We need to recruit these industries that pay these high wages and the high-tech wages. And we can have students from Anderson High School, Gadsden State, highly trained to feed into this research and technology park. That would be a wonderful, wonderful beginning. Thank you.
I believe the first thing that we have to do is to be more competitive. We're competing with other cities in the state for the same business. And we gotta be more aggressive. It's like we waiting for the business to come to us. You know, you think about the auto manufacturers that we have in Alabama and Georgia. We know they're expanding. So to me, I see a vision of us start building up small suppliers in our city because they're gonna need parts. And so we need to fund them and give them tax breaks. But like I said before, we need to be more competitive. We not, we just waiting for somebody to just bring us something. You know, I think also about the Department of Commerce. When I think about them in the state of Alabama, and I think about Greg Kimfield, you know, the secretary to, I guess, Governor Bennett. We need to break him down and do a presentation to the MDA, the EDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and I guess also the city officials and county officials that we sit down and let him do a presentation, tell us what's just coming down the pipeline to the state. He give us presentation, tell us what we need to do to get ready. But see, a lot of times, we not even ready for the business to come. It's like they catch us off-guard. And so I would like to see him come down and just give us a presentation, tell us what we need to do so we can be ready for it. So we won't miss opportunities. We have missed so many opportunities because our city was not ready, was not prepared. So I would start there with the Department of Commerce and ask Greg Kimfield to come down and just give us a presentation. Thank you.
Residents Anderson is still the largest employer here in this area. We have Southern Company, we have the McWay companies. We still have the Anderson Army Depot. We have an influx of high-paying jobs. What we have to do is, we have to position our residents, our community, to actually be put in a position to fill those skilled positions. Companies are longing for skilled employees. We have to reach deep down into our communities and sit with the companies. Partner with the Chamber of Commerce and find out what interest are these companies looking for? What skill set are these companies looking for? We have to maximize and filter positions that are already available. Also, wow, on the back end, while we're reaching out to additional industries to bring further industries to this community. We have an influx of land, investable land, that we can bring jobs in. But when the jobs get here, we want to make sure that those jobs aren't filled with residents from surrounding counties such as Jacksonville, Oxford, you know, as far as gas. We want to make sure that they're filled with residents strictly here from Anderson. So we have Chi Hall Training Community who specialize in grassroots levels and also training in technical industries. Also, we have a community colleges here. We have to get our citizens into those skilled positions and specialize into trades such as heating and air plumbing, skill set so they can fill these high-paying positions. Thank you. We need an edge. We need to be that competitive force that's gonna bring business in. Anderson has great demographics. We have people that are willing to work. We have land that's reasonably priced. We have everything we need. The first thing I would do is create what I call an all-inclusive packet. It'll have all our demographics. It will have different landforms we have out here, different buildings we have available. And it'll be a huge package. And we go out and we find the businesses and what they want. And we can put together a packet and put it in a brochure form and send it out to each company upfront. And they spend a lot of money and time doing this research. We can do it for them. We need to prepare our kids. We need to go out and find the skilled labor that our youth can learn and apply that to them. Supply them with the needs they need to find that skilled labor source. We need to go to our major industry and see what they're looking for. And we need to prepare our people. Because opportunity, you can only catch opportunity when it's coming towards you. Once she's gone, you can't catch up. So we need to get our people prepared. We need to get them ahead of the curve. And we need to be that moving force that's gonna attract the business to this city. We need to be proactive. We can't sit back and say, "Okay, we have seven of the largest businesses in the Calhoun County." Because if it wasn't for the fact that if you're not currently looking for work, you're not considered unemployed, our unemployment rate would be in the double digits. So we need to actually go out and create business, bring business in, and make Anderson attractive to our business and commerce so that we can grow this city and we can give everybody a chance to dream and to realize their dreams in life. Thank you.
It's no secret that the council that Anderson elected in 2008 had its trouble getting along and having a sense of decor when they were working. So the question is related to that. As a group on the City Council, can you work together, if you're elected, without fussing and not getting along and acting like children? Mr. Dunn?
That's one of the easiest questions to answer here tonight. But yes, to your question, I believe first of all, we gotta realize when we come together as a council, we not gonna always gonna agree. We not gonna always gonna agree. But what we got to do is disagree in a reasonable fashion and put the city first. You know, a lot of times, a lot of the disagreements based on "my ward, my ward." Yes, we here to represent our wards, but it should, and it's fine with the city. What's best for our city. And I think if we calm and respect our fellow brother and our fellow woman, whoever, I think it would just work out. I mean, the key is having respect for one another and really hear the person out. I have learned we have not listened and heard the method all the way out, and so we judging too quickly. And I believe a lot of times, we are quick to attack instead of hearing what the person is saying. So I'll be one who slow to hear before I'm quick to speak and want to just support my fellow citizens and my councilmen and what we trying to do. But to answer your question once again, I believe the peace that I have learned in this good book that I read says, "Peace that pass all understanding." I believe as long as we keep peace in there, we all will come to our understanding. Thank you.
Yes, I will be able to get along. I've been fortunate enough to have a relationship with the already-elected council, this speaker, Mary Legg. He was actually my mentor when I was in school. Mayor Von Stewart, I sat on the bench and presided with him over municipal cases. And the constable Mrs. Solasi, I had a personal relationship with him even before we even decided to take a political endeavor. And the constable Mr. Dunn, I've known him since I was a child. I beat him in football. And the constable Ms. Harris, I've had a chance to have a relationship with Ms. Harris. And within my career and also living, I have a niche of pretty much feeling our personalities and see engaging people who I can work with. So even before I became, you know, running for City Council, I've had a relationship with these people to see that the city of Anderson has chosen a good group of leaders, a good group of leaders who are committed to progress, a good group of leaders who are committed to representing the city as a whole and not dividing the city into wards. But when you speak of Anderson, you speak of a one city. So I think I'm the missing piece of that puzzle. So to answer your question, I think we'll be good. Thank you.
I agree. I think that's an easy question. Yes. I think I can get along. I think we'll all get along. Because the first thing is, one, we'll work to get an understanding of what motivates each other. I would want to know what motivates each one of my fellow councilmen or women and see what motivates them so I know what boundaries to step over and how to work with them. And second, I'll make sure I love them because love conquers all. So if I'm showing love to them and they're showing love to us and it's because we love this city that we're running in the first place. Everybody up here is up here for love. So if we love each other and if we have an understanding and all that, and get an understanding, if we understand each other's motives, that we love each other and we truly care about our city, we will make sure that we coordinate and work with each other to build a better Anderson. So I think this council would be very well harmonized. Thank you.
I agree with Councilman Dunn. That's probably the easiest question any of us have to answer, of course. That's why we're here. We know we can work together. The key is listening to one another. The key is looking at the big picture. Don't just get into whatever for our ward, but look at the whole city. Do whatever is best for the entire city. Also, it's extremely simple. Just treat other people the way you want them to treat you, and it will all work out. Thank you.
How can we continue to keep our neighborhoods clean from overgrown grass and old cars that sit in yards that are not in operation? What will you do to enforce this so that our home values will stay at a moderate rate?
First thing, I'm a strong supporter of our city manager, Mr. Hoss, Motor and Law legislation that he's trying to get passed. I actually told him I wanted to be one of the first to pilot that. And what it does is, if you take care of the lot that's next door to your residence, as long as you kept it cut, the city of Anderson would manage the taxes on it. And then, after three years, then you'll be able to get a tax deed on that which transfers ownership to you. So what that does is, that increase value within, you know, the home that you already have and also increasing personal wealth within that homeowner, which give them a vested interest within their community. Now, another thing that I want to implement within my ward, being that I'm elected, I want to bring a beautification award. And what that beautification award would do is, it would be in a incentive program for, you know, whatever house on that street. And I want to do it by streetwise. I'm still eyeing out the details of the program. But I want to provide an incentive for that homeowner who does keep up their grass, who does keep their house well manicured, and also who does take care of that community. I want to go a step further and actually do it on a block and actually do a block party for the nicest block in that community. So what that does is, that provides motivation So what that does is, that provides motivation and provides incentive for other people to get on board. So, and what that does is, in result of that, you have a cleaner community. More importantly, you have people who care about how their community looks now. Another thing I wanna implement is Ward Two Cleanup Day. That's where I visit every community within my ward. Everybody is out at seven o'clock in the morning, you know, and I won't stop until I've visited every street within my ward. And what that does is, if your house is nice, we help out a neighbor. It generates community energy. So that's my plans. Thank you.
How do we beautify our city? How do we take care of a lot of this stuff? One thing is, well, the first thing I do is, I already talked about it. Currently, Anniston has one part-time grant writer. Recently, we've lost over a million dollars a year in grant money that would've done just that, beautification, rebuild dilapidated houses and stuff like that. We need to get that income and try to fix up some of these houses. And we can move some of our senior citizens into them or something like that. We can buy that land from whoever owns it at reasonable prices. I don't wanna just take land from people. We can pay them for their land on reasonable wage. And we can take their house, fix it up, and move somebody in. And if they take care of it long enough, then we give it to them. But we don't just take property from people that way. Also, some of the lots that are growing up and continues to grow up that's in enough space, I'd love to turn those into such things as community gardens or some kind of plant field or plant daisies or something like that, so that you don't have to worry about it overgrowing. The people will be able to tend to it and mend to it. Also, I wanna put out challenges to the citizens. You know, have a, pick up, let's pick up a piece of trash today. Everybody bend over and pick up a piece of trash or something like that. But just commit the challenge to the people. And a lot of people, once challenged, it makes them think about what's going on and what they see. And if they're challenged to pick something up, they're less likely to be the one to throw it down. Once you grab to help somebody, you're less likely to cause the problem. Once you went through somewhere and picked up paper, you're less likely to be the one walking and throwing a wrapper on the floor. So we, I wanna challenge them. I wanna foster a personality and a mentality throughout this city of, I'm gonna help you, you're gonna help me, and together, we'll have a harmonious city where we can all grow. Thank you.
Your question brought to mind. When I was a little girl, I was in the Girl Scouts. And I remember the anti-littering campaign then, and it stays with me today. And I do believe the key is education. We need to make sure that these children at an early age understand the value of not littering, taking pride in their property, taking pride in where they live and in their community. And engage them in cleaning up their schools, clean up the neighborhoods. And if that doesn't, sometimes there are situations that are just deplorable and they are blight on everyone else's property. And in that case, we need to have a consistent program. Through the Public Works Department, we have some very, very competent people here who are willing to help us enforce the codes. And we need to make sure that that is done on an even basis throughout our town. It shouldn't be that someone who lives on Glenwood Terrace should have a prettier environment than someone who lives on, anywhere. We need, the whole city, we need to have pride in our communities. Education is the key. Thank you.
Hey Phillip, if you don't mind, can you say that question again? I couldn't really hear you on the stage. It's an echo sound. And it's really bad up here.
Okay. The question says, how can we continue, excuse me, how can we continue to keep neighborhoods clean from having overgrown grass and old cars that sit in our yards that are not in operation? What will you do to enforce this so that our home values will stay at a moderate value?
Okay, thank you. I don't have a solution, but I do have some ideas. When I've been campaigning here, many of them say the same. Since campaigning, there's a lot of vacant homes in our city. And many of the problems right there, we got a lot of vacant homes. People not living there, and they're not taking care of their homes. I believe we need to come up with some type of ordinance. Once again, this is an ideal. The person gonna take care of that home, that vacant home, not just be only just fine, but also they can lose it to the city. And we take it over, fix the home up, and start having some of these families that starting off, that we can bring more value back to these homes that are just sitting still. I mean, there are plenty of vacant homes. It's sad, and it's making our city look bad. I know it sounds like I'm way out there, but it's just an ideal. Can you imagine having some families starting off, giving a good price on that home and the value that we bring back? You know, we have lost so many people from our city from 1960. We had 33,000. At this present time, I believe in 2010, they said we down to 23,000. We lost one-third of our population, and people still leaving. I mean, we're gonna have to face this problem. So we gotta counter it in some kind of way. If not, we're gonna have a lot of vacant homes, and we're gonna continue to talk about this problem. So that's what I would like to do. Come up with some type of ordinance, if we're able to, and use that house to bless somebody and help somebody with. Thank you.
Do you feel a revitalized downtown is an important key to a revitalized Anniston? Please explain your viewpoints.
Absolutely. A revitalized downtown is the essence of a booming city. When a person comes into your city, the first thing they look at is your downtown. You know, and that's, but this is what we gotta understand. This is what downtowns are. Downtowns are businesses built by middle-class Americans, which means that the middle-class Americans are dependent on other middle-class Americans and people in the lower class, poorer people, to keep them in business and subsidies. So what we need to do is create more of a job market. And that will create an industry boom. And once we start getting people jobs and we build our middle class up, building our middle class will build our downtown. And when you have a pretty downtown, it attracts people. People are attracted to downtowns and things like that. And we are the model city. So we have everything it takes to bring that, kinda foster that personality and that mentality back into the city. So yes, a downtown is important. And we can, and one way I would like to do that is cooperate that with, collaborate that with our hospitality and tourism industry. We have the La Daga Trail coming through. We have the film initiative, the film industry is coming through and all of that. And we can use those things that attract people from outside of Anniston to come to Anniston. We can use that to help build up our downtown, because these people come into our town, they leave on average of $198 a person, and they leave. So if you got 30,000 people a year visiting your city, leaving $198 a piece and leaving, that money stays in our city and it helps us grow. That's why it's bad when we go to Oxford and spend our money, because that money stays in Oxford, and Oxford can grow. So we need to build a downtown and a town in general to make people wanna come here and leave their money with us. Thank you.
We have got to clean up our downtown. It puts on a face of what we're all about. It can either be an image of success or it can be a concrete jungle, an image of failure. The first thing we need to do is take care of our existing businesses. We need to talk with these merchants. We need to find out what they need, what can City Hall do to help you. We cannot afford to have another business close. We have simply got to take care of our own. Just to give you one example of something that happened just a few months ago. It does sound great to have an event downtown, you know, the Rumble on Noble or whatever. But some of the existing businesses have told me that their business suffered because their customers could not get into the stores or the restaurants to give them, you know, their business that day. And so we've got to do a better job. I've also talked with some other merchants and to find out what we need. And one suggestion that was made is that we establish an enterprise district. And that is, if someone is neglecting their property downtown and it's looking terrible, then there needs to be some repercussions for that. If you own a business downtown, you need to take care of it. We have got to put on a nicer face. Also, we need greenery. We have to have a place where people really want to come. We need to establish, I'd love to see the theater come back downtown. We need to see what other downtowns are doing to revitalize their areas. And if they can do it, we certainly can do it here. Thank you.
Revitalize downtown. Once again, I don't have a solution, but I do have some great ideas. I'm a visionary, and what I see, we got all these little empty parking lots. If we just had a main parking lot where everybody would park their cars and take parking off the street, then start putting more trees and greenery down the walkway where people can walk and have a nice walkway. Get some eatery restaurants that will come where we can sit outside and eat. Have some great entertainment, plays, art, jazz. I can see that. Can you see that? And I believe we would start seeing more people, more traffic come down there. And then it'll be more friendly, downtown friendly for all of us that we can really enjoy downtown. When you go to metro cities, you see that. It causes people to come out and interact with one another. And so that's what I would hope to see in the future. Thank you.
Downtown Anniston's greatest asset is, it's convenient. That's the central location that bring all four parts of this city together. So we must invest in it. But what we must do is, we must find out downtown niche that works for Anniston. It has to be diversified downtown. My dream is to see downtown commerce in the daytime and at night. You can loosen your tie, and you can take you and your family down and have a good time. Also downtown is, it's convenient for people who don't have great transportation. If you just have the least good of health, you can make it downtown. So if we have a nice grocery store, we have a nice place where people can go down and get things done, nice retail hub where people can go down and shop. That's ours unifying thing for the city of Anniston. That's places where people from Wards One, Wards Two, Three, and Four will come and meet and do the common thing. They will shop. They will spend their money within Anniston. They will see their tax dollars invested back into Anniston. But what we also have to do is, we have to make it more convenient. We have to make it accessible. So what we have to do is, we have to invest in parking. We have to invest in the perception of downtown. Let's find that solid niche that works for the city of Anniston and make downtown our downtown. Thank you.
And this is a long question, so bear with me just for me to get through this. It says, "My wife and I proudly send our children to Anniston City Schools. We have no desire to send them to any of the private schools in Anniston or any of the surrounding areas. It is gravely repulsive how this city has supported the children in this school system for the last several years. How can each of you convince me that you are genuinely concerned about supporting the Anniston City School System?"
That's a very good question. The entire community needs to come together to support the schools. For the past several years, I have volunteered through the Knights Concert Series for these children to have a great cultural experience. I have written the grants to the Alabama State Council for the Arts and for South Arts to get money for children to go to these events free of charge. I go to the classrooms. I take musicians. I take ballerinas. I take actors and the children, I say the children, they're young people. They're high school students. They know exactly. They have the background to appreciate what they're seeing. They are starved for the arts. We need more of a community commitment. We need all the community to come together and work together to do everything we can to help our school. You are right that it's a shame that the community has neglected Anniston. It has, I, there's a lot of wonderful, wonderful children there. There are, there's a dropout rate we need to address. And to me, I believe we can bring groups such as Real Men, the Boys and Girls Club, the Y, all kinds of community people together. And we need to have a school summit. We need to determine what we can do to help these students. The city council cannot do it alone. The school board cannot do it alone. The teachers cannot do it alone. We need to come together as a community, identify what the problems are and how we can work together to move Anniston ahead. Thank you.
How do you know that I would definitely wanna invest in the youth? It's because I already have done that. In 1989, my wife and I started an organization called Savior Youth Foundation. I did that for five years. We didn't get funds from no one. We raised the money ourselves because we cared about the kids. Mind you, I had three kids of my own in the house at the time. But we still wanted to give back to the kids or the youth of Anniston. Then from that, I started a mentor program at elementary school, at the middle school, and also at the high school while my kids was in school themselves, because I still cared about the future of the youth of Anniston. I have joined the YMCA board. I have volunteered for Boys and Girls Club. By the fact, I was a sports coach, I was guest director here in Norwood two years, my wife and I. My heart's always been for the young people in this town. And it hurts me a lot of times how many people have given up on them. But we got some powerful young people in this town. Let me tell you, in this city, some great young people. And so I believe, how can you get involved in a child life if you're not involved in the community? I have been involved in the community, and I will still continue to do that. So you will have my assurance that I will support the youth of this city. Thank you.
First off, I wanna thank the citizens who wrote that for your loyalty to the Anniston City School System. And also, I wanna point out that we have something in common. I currently have two nieces who are in the Anniston City School System. So I do have a vested interest. Both of them go to Anniston Middle School. One of them is a cheerleader there. But more importantly, I have a decision that I have to make next year. I currently have a four-year-old daughter that I'm responsible for. I'm responsible for the future of her education. Her mom and I, we have to sit down and we have to decide who's gonna be responsible for the future education of my daughter. So when you say, how can I assure you and how can I give you my assurance of my commitment to Anniston City School System? I have no other choice, because I have a little girl who I have to look into her eyes, and she counts on me to ensure that I make the best decision. Not only that, I have nieces who count on me now to get this done and to ensure that once they do finish school, that they are prepared to go to post-education school and actually serve and actually be and perform at an overachievement level. So I am committed to putting the best teachers in front of our students, to give them the best resources. And I am committed to actually providing the best education for the youth of the city of Anniston. I have no other choice. Thank you.
You wanna be sure that your councilman is concerned about your kids. You wanna be sure that your councilman cares about your kids. If you wanna see that, if you wanna see it in me, look at my track record. Look at what I've done. I was a member of the PTO, and I haven't fathered any children yet, but I feel like all these kids of mine, I substitute teach whenever the school needs my help. I'm working at the Booster Club. And whatever else I can do to help our kids, I'm there. See, the problem is, there are schools that work with kids that when they walk into these schools, they're underperforming, their grades behind. And by the time they finish this school, they're 90% success rate of sending kids to college and them graduating college. We need to see what they're doing differently than we are in our public schools and see how we can get that kind of success rate right here in Anniston. See, Anniston High School was once one of the biggest performing schools in this city. And we got more donations and we got more community support than any other school in this city. And what we need to do is go back to those people that supported us in the 90s, in the 80s, in the 70s, and see who supported the school then and see who's not doing it now. And ask them, what can we do to get you back on board with our youth so that we can grow our children into the business professionals, into the workers that you need, into the community that not only will they come back for you, but when they come back, if you own a bank, they'll have more money to put in your bank. So you have more investment capital. I mean, if you need skilled workers, they'll be better trained. So they can come back and be better workers for you. And they might invent that next thing that's gonna make you another million dollars. So we need to take that investment. And if you wanna know that somebody's concerned about your kids, look at what they're doing already. Thank you.
This person asks if you can list and explain three specific ideals you have to curtail crime and prevent adults and young people from standing on the streets and the street corners in West Anniston. This person says, "Police patrols are not the answer." And she asks, "Please be specific."
Number one would definitely be myself. Putting myself out on the street. The age group that is out on the streets right now that are pretty much holding down the corners out there, that's my age group. Nine times out of ten, those are the people who I went to school with. So it starts with a conversation to understand what's the frustration of that group of people and why they're out there doing it. We really have to take the time to talk to the people who are committing these crimes. And I've had an opportunity to do so. And their answer is, I don't have any other thing to do. This is the only way I know how to get it done, you know? I've been arrested before, so I have a felony, so I can't apply for a job. I can't get a job. So first thing we have to do is, we have to dig deep and start at a grassroots level with these individuals and empathize with them and see what it is that's bothering them. That's the number one step. I start with myself and my commitment. Second thing is gonna be community policing, back to community policing. Not policing patrol, but community policing. Getting more boots on the ground. Get the police back into the community as opposed to patrolling. Get them out. Let's knock on the door every once in a while and say, "Hey, Ms. Johnson, how you doing? Just wanted to stop by and let you know that I'm out here today." That's the second thing. Third thing is gonna be you, the citizens. That person that's standing on the corner, that's your neighbor. Talk to them. Get to know your neighbor, see what their frustration is. See if there's something that you can do to help them. We can't depend on the government to solve all of our problems within our community. It starts within the community. So myself, with the support of the police who are committed to protecting us, and third, the most importantly, is you, because you live in that community. Thank you.
Three things is kinda tough, because I've been dedicated to this. This has been going through my mind for a long time. So to limit it to three is kinda hard, because I have a lot of ideas for my ward and my citizens and the people that I'm here to serve. First of all, the first thing I do is, I look at the living conditions. You know, Cooper Homes don't have air conditioning.
You know, Cooper Homes don't have air conditioning. A lot of the projects out here, it's hotter inside the house than it is outside, so it forces the people that live in here outside. So they're outside littering, making a mess, the kids are hot, and when you're hot, you're agitated. I don't care how dignified you are. If it's 103 degrees, you're upset. So let's, let's look at the living conditions of our citizens. Second of all, let's give them an option. You know, I was recently on Rocky Hollow and I was talking to a lot of these where we look at as troubled youth. And when I started talking to them about business ideas and opportunities that's available to them now, I was talking about some stuff that was foreign to them. They hadn't heard this before. So I'll make the future available to our people. I'll make the future available to our youth and I'll show them how they don't have to get in trouble and that they have other options out there. I'll help change that mentality, that aura about us where we feel like, you know, so many of us have given up, so many of us don't know that there's a tomorrow for us, so many of us don't know why we even need to finish high school because we don't know how we're going to pay for college. I would put signs out all over the city that say, "www.fafa-fa-f-s-a.gov." And what that website is, is it's a simple website, it takes 10 minutes to fill out, and when your child fills that out, if you're getting free reduced price lunch at school, you get to go to college for free. And I'll make their options available to them. So I'll work with the people, I'll get them in school, I'll work with their living conditions to build a better person. And once we build a better person, we don't have to have the police knock people in the head because they'll build themselves up. Thank you.
This question involves working with the other cities in Calhoun County and specifically the city of Oxford. And the question is simply, "How would you encourage joint ventures with the city of Oxford?", the Oxford, the city of Oxford? Or would you?
I'm sorry, can't really hear. But first of all, I think we need to put our pride to the side. And I was told by a very important guy, a person in my life, someone I looked up to, he said, "If you want to do something right, find somebody who's doing it better than you." Right now, Oxford is doing it better than us. And so we need to put our pride to the side and go and sit under that council and ask them some ideas. How did you come up with this vision? How'd you get everybody to buy into this? Because I mean, we have so much opportunity here in this city of Anniston. We got great talented gifted people. That's why I'm still here in the city of Anniston, because of the people. I just love the people that we have here. But I would encourage the council, I would start with the mayor, to see if he would buy into it, and ask my fellow councilmen, "Hey, let's humble ourselves, let's get our pride out the way and let's go find out what Oxford is doing." Because they're too close for us not to benefit from what they are doing because we all would benefit from it. We just, I guess, partner up. You can see it spreading, not just to Anniston, but all the way to Jacksonville, we all would benefit from it as a region. So I will humble myself and ask the councilman and mayor, "Let's go sit under that council and ask them to pour towards us their vision and their ideals." That's how we do it. Thank you.
What we have to bring back is one of the things that, you know, separated us from the start. We have to bring our schools back together. You know, Anniston to Oxford rival football game and basketball game was the biggest thing. You know, everybody waited to the first game of the year, so those two cities would come together and everybody would wear their red and black and everybody would wear their gold and black. We have to bring that back. You may say, "Okay, sports." But that's one thing that brought these two cities together. If you didn't have anything to look out of, you know, within that year, that was the one thing you had to look out of. So what we have to do, let's bring our kids back together and working together again. Let's focus on that. On the other side, let's partner with that city government and see what they are doing down there. Bring a few ideas to the table of our own now, and then what we'll do is, we'll collaborate with each other and we'll show that Anniston to Oxford is committed to coming together on some things. True enough, we have some ideas of our own, some great ideas. Oxford can learn a few things from Anniston. But first of all, let's bring our communities back together, let's get that rivalry back going, while also let's conduct some business together. Thank you. You know, one thing I've learned growing up, everybody likes to be on board with a winner. We have opportunity, opportunity, opportunity. What we need to do is, you know, Oxford is on the verge of being landlocked and we have plenty of land, we have plenty of property. Well, what that means is, we got the opportunity to build some things that the only way they're going to get a piece of the pie, and it's not, not in a confrontational way, but the only way they're going to get a piece of the pie is if they partner with us on some things and we work together. You know, if we can build our airport, it'll help Oxford prosper as well as us. If we can build Anniston, it'll make Jacksonville prosper, it'll make Oxford prosper, it'll make everything. That's why we're this county seat because we're supposed to be doing really, really good because if we do good, everybody else grows. So it is a partnership, us taking care of ourselves. I have some cards outside, if you walk out the table, grab one of my cards and go to my website. I talk about this a lot. I talk about vision and dreams and plans that will not only grow Anniston, but it'll grow the entire county. And we as a county can prosper and grow, but us as the county seat traditionally, the county seat usually grows and because they grow, the city grows. So everybody needs to understand that if we can all get on the same vision, we'll all see the growth and change we want and we'll see that partnership. Thank you.
We need to build on our assets. We need to solidify our relationship with surrounding communities. We need to emphasize all that's good about Anniston. There are certain, we need to make, we need to develop ourselves as much as we possibly can, ecotourism, Coldwater Mountain, the rapid trail transport. We need to emphasize the ability to attract businesses if we work together as communities. For example, we have the automobile manufacturers and their suppliers. We have a triage of different, three different huge automobile manufacturers. If we work together with the surrounding communities, we can attract some of these second-tier suppliers. And we need to market our airport as a regional hub. For some strange reason, I've never quite understood it, but it's right down in the vicinity of Oxford. They need our cooperation. There are other ways that we can work together to bring Oxford together, but we cannot force it. But I think we definitely need to develop our strengths and Oxford will follow. Thank you.
What are your views and your ideas about the Anniston City Council and its ability to help develop the McClellan property?
First thing what we have to do is, we have to construct a plan. There's the MDA that's out there right now that's responsible for some development out at McClellan. What the responsibility of the Anniston City Council to do is, bring those two organizations to the table and let's iron out all the legal things and the red tape that's stopping development at Fort McClellan. Once we've done that, let's collaborate and actually draw out a plan that's going to develop and bring industry into McClellan. So, once we have all the, all the team players and we have everybody at the table, what we have to do is, we have to put that plan down and again, go back and create that niche that's going to work for the city of Anniston and it's going to benefit our citizens in the city of Anniston to actually develop McClellan. So it's going to take the personnel and the responsibility of the city council is to bring the correct personnel to the table to get the project done. Thank you. I think, first of all, I think a lot of the hindrances that we've had in the past to developing McClellan, I think a lot of those are gone now. So, let's start over. Let's start from the beginning and let, and let, and let's look at it. Let's, I would love to, each councilman, write down their dreams, goals, and vision for the city and for McClellan, and let's take all those dreams and visions together in a, in a meeting and let's sit down and say, "All right, this is what I want." Have it written down so you can't jump on somebody else's team and say, "Oh, that's what I wanted to do." But let's write it down, let's have a dream and a vision after listening to our constituents. And then once we get all those dreams and visions together, we all get together, we begin to share it. And if we have a shared vision for Fort McClellan with a shared vision and a common goal, the common goal is, we want job growth, we want business growth, we want development, we want our kids to have better lives, and we want to live a little better ourselves. So we can all get together and picture it, a whole city working together to develop another part of the city that's going to make life that much better for us. I think if we do that, McClellan will develop itself, it'll seem effortless, it'll seem like we didn't even try, it'll seem like it just built itself up from the murky moral. And I, and I see that happening in our Fort McClellan, and I want to be part of that dream to foster it in. Thank you.
As a member of the Planning Commission, we recently approved the McClellan redevelopment overlay plan, which gives much more flexibility to attract new industry. We need to be ready for these industries to come in, we need to have, we have site ready, we need to have old buildings torn down, we need to have these sites ready where we can attract new industry into McClellan. We need to do all we can to promote it as a retirement community. I really believe that that is going to be huge. There's a golf course there, the swimming facility is just state-of-the-art, the fitness center, the scenery is beautiful, everything is there to develop a retirement community. As a matter of fact, an assisted living facility is already going to be coming, the Planning Commission did recently approve that a few months ago. I believe McClellan may be our answer for revenue, it may really, really help the rest of us turn this place around. Thank you.
As a city, I first believe we need to have funds put to the side from our surplus, any money, we need to have reserve money so when a project come up in McClellan that we can support it. Infrastructure type like roads, buildings need to be made, I believe we need to have funds to support that effort. But also I would ask the region, our surrounding city, to buy in these stakeholders with this and try to support this because if we can build up a club, the whole region can benefit from that. And so I believe we just need to have funds reserved and ready so when they need something, that we can support it because the tax revenues that we can receive from that place, I mean, would be great for our city. But also what it'll do for relationships throughout the region, bringing us together in a neutral place that we all can come together. You know, also I think we need to make sure we're ready for zoning. One of the biggest issues they have so far, they have been slow on zoning, you know, so they can bring business into the place, into the streets. And so I would make sure, like I said earlier in one of my, I guess, questions, we got to be prepared for when business comes, so when it's time to turn the key, we can just move on and just keep going forward. Thank you.
Considering your current occupation, how much time can you truly commit to the council seat and help turn this city around?
Well, currently I'm a, I'm on a military retirement, so that opens up a lot of time in the first place, huh? How much time do you need? I'm dedicated to this thing. Whatever it takes, that's my dream, that's my goal, whatever it takes. I'm not trying to be rich, I don't need a lot of money in my life. You know, anybody that knows my, my testimony is, I faced death, I almost died in 2001, and when that happened, I dedicated my life, I asked God to put me in a position to where I could help people. And now, if I'm elected into this seat, it'll be just where I need to be so that I can see what I dedicated my life, what I asked God to put me in a position to do, done. So how much time do you need? That's how much time I got. I want to go at it. I'm gonna go at it relentless. I want to go at it, you know, the scripture say, "As the deer passes after the water..." The thing about a deer, if a deer is thirsty, he's going to run over lions and tigers and everything else so he can get to that brook and get something to drink because they, they're just, they're just determined like that. I want to put that same determination, that same determination, when I used to get up at five and three and four o'clock in the morning in the military and go put my life on the line and do everything that my commanding officer asked me to do, I want to give you all that same determination. I know what it's like to put in a 24-hour work shift. I know what it's like to do 12 on, 12 off for seven days a week without a break, you know, and I want to give you all that. I want to give this to this city because it's already in me. The military already did to me, they already trained me to work like a workhorse, like a mule, so I'm here. What else do you want? All the time it takes, that's my answer. Thank you.
I believe this is one of my strongest assets, is the time I have to devote to Anniston. The old saying is, "Give a busy person a job and they'll get it done." I'm very busy, I'm busy all the time, I'm always engaged in projects and trying to better this community, but I am a retired teacher, turning Anniston around, doing the research. Everything that's involved is very, very time-consuming. I've got the time, I'm willing to give it my all. This was not on my bucket list of things to do, but I am ready, willing, and able to work full-time, whatever it takes. I've got the time to do it. Thank you.
Well, by definition, I'm a servant by heart. I just love to serve. Sometimes my wife get on me and say, "Babe, you cannot give your whole self to everything you're involved with," but I don't know no other way but to because I'm a servant by heart. I love to serve. Even with this campaign, I have not made any excuses for not meeting with the constituents. I had two war meetings, the last three months I met with the constituents. I have met with every person or every constituent who called me with a complaint, have rode to their house and rode around the neighborhood with them, they showed me their issue because that's what I want to do, I'm a servant. And that's what we here as councilmen, we are public servants. I think we have lost focus and think the war belonged to us. And the truth or the matter, we belong to you guys. And so I'm not going to make no excuses. You have Marcus done, you have my whole men. Thank you.
As your city councilman, the person you want to represent you, you don't want it to be a person who has a lot of free time, you want it to be a busy person. I wake up every morning, I drive revenue for a bank, I run a business. What that done is, that has given me a significant trait of time management. I manage my time and it has made me prioritize my time. You elect me as your city councilman, what you will have is a person who prioritizes the well-being of the citizens of the city of Anniston. No, I'm not retired, I don't have a lot of free time, but what I do have, I have a commitment. And number one, my number one priority is the betterment of the city of Anniston because it's where I live, it's where I go to work, and it's where I pay my taxes. So what you have is, you have a person that's committed and I will have ample enough time to serve you, the citizens of the city of Anniston. Thank you.
And this one says, "Do you, would, or would you support Sunday alcohol sales in the city of Anniston? And would you support open container privileges as part of an entertainment district on Noble Street?"
I am the voice of my constituents. I would get input and I would go by the majority of what my constituents wish to happen for Anniston. I would look at the big picture. I would have to weigh every single issue involved, but I would be the voice of the people. Thank you.
Say ditto with that, I mean, that's well put, Millie. She's right. I think it's very important that we get a citywide involvement and ask our constituents, our citizens, what they feel about this. It's not a one-person decision, I mean, because it will affect our city. But at the same token, I don't want to be, excuse me, I don't want to be in the way of growth at the same time. So I wouldn't, that's my belief, as many of you guys already know, that's why I was laughing up here, but I wouldn't let my belief get in the way for our city to have opportunity to grow, but I would base it on our constituents, how they feel about it, if they have peace about it, then they have my support. Thank you.
I don't want to sound the same, but I'm put in a position to represent a community. I don't have an option of speaking on chef's personal feelings. So what I do is, I have to represent a community. What I will take to my community is, I will give them my option. I will show them the effect of what Sunday alcohol sales are doing in another state and also show them what Sunday alcohol sales are not doing and give the citizens an option to make a decision for me to take back to City Hall and represent them. So, before I make a decision on that, I support what we come to... So before I make a decision on that, I support what we come to as a community, and I'll take that representation of the citizens back to City Hall. The first thing I do is listen to my constituents. I know we all said the same thing, but it, it comes to you guys. You know, I really wish that vote was for the citizens and let them make that vote. But if it's, if it came down to it, I would make sure that that income or that sales is gonna come to help support our school system, first of all. If it passed, I would make sure it supported our schools and everything else. But like I say, it's the citizens, it's your choice and your voice and your vote, and that's what I wanna be as your councilman, is your voice and your vote. So I won't go against what my constituents want, and I wanna be a sounding person for my constituents. So whatever you guys wanna do, let's rock and roll. Thank you.
Closing statements from each candidate. Same rules, you have two minutes. And Mr. Dunn, it's your turn to lead off.
I wanna say this in closing, something I said at the meeting when they appointed me into this seat, I want you to interview, and I said to the councilman, the mayor, at the time, I said, Anniston's like a diamond. Have been set down and stagnated and no movement. There's dust on us, and I think it's time for us to lift up the diamond, to dust it off and show the reflection of who we really are. Because when you look at a diamond, there's so many different facets to a diamond as you turn it. And we have not turned Anniston around enough for people to see the great opportunity that we have here. With the new mayor coming in, with the young councilman, so Ron is not here, he's a young man, with these two young men, one of them wanna win, and you got Jay Jenkins, who have a little experience, he's coming back. I believe with my experience, that'll be a great balance. And if you vote for me on October the 9th, I will be your voice, and I will hear you out, and I will stand for you down there at City Hall.
Citizens of Anniston, October the 9th, you have a very important decision to make. War II specific, you have to decide who's gonna be your representation for the next four years. October the 10th, you don't get to wake up and change your mind. You have a decision to make that day. While you're thinking about, who am I gonna vote for? Who do I want to represent War II? I want you to take a second to sit back and look deep into each one of the candidates. Look at the traits of each candidate, look at their characteristics. See if that person is already an affluent person and has influence in your community. See if that person already has a reasoning voice, that when that person speaks, others listen. Take the time to get to know the person. Don't focus on fantasies and unforeseen dreams, focus on the reality of it. We have an issue here in this city, and we have a decision that has to be made. And what we need, we need the right person who's gonna be a decision-maker and also a collaborative team player, who's gonna come together and bring people together and be an advocate for the citizens of Anniston. There's only one date to do it. October the 9th, War II residents, it is your chance. I don't want War II residents to be responsible for another four years of stagnant growth within this city. Let War II residents be a model for the model city and vote the right leadership in. Vote Chef and Goodson, October the 9th. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for coming out and giving us your time. I'm David Reddick, I do wanna be your voice, and I wanna be the hope, opportunity, and the change you need in Anniston. You know, I was, time management, when I was acting duty, we only had so much time to get it done. I've been called the dreamer a lot of times, but you know what I was always taught, it's better to throw a spear at the moon and hit an eagle than throw a spear at the eagle and hit a rock. So vote for David E. Reddick, somebody with experience in working for the citizens, somebody with civil experience and a strong Democrat. I've grown in the Alabama Democratic Conference, and they raised me as their own, and I'm proud to be a part of that. And I'm proud every time I see them. I see Joe Reed, and he knows me by name. And that's important, because you know, you have an advocate, somebody that's gonna stand up and speak out, and you also have somebody that will take the time to read every document that's put in front of their face and look for flaws and errors and how this is gonna affect us in three months, or three years, or five years, or 50 years. And you got somebody that understands litigation and how it all works, and I wanna be that. I'm gonna be a change agent for this city, and I'm a visionary, and I'm somebody that will look at every aspect, every angle, because that's how my dad raised me. He made me read schematics when I was 14 years old and said, well, if this is going here, what's it gonna do? So what part will make this not work? Alright, so what do you need to change? And that's what I was taught to do. Find the problem and change it, and make everything work so that everything can flow. If you want an affluent city, if you wanna grow, if you need that job and business growth in this city, and you wanna make sure your kids have every option, option and opportunity to make the best life possible for themselves, vote David E. Reddick, October 9th. Thank you, God bless.
As all of you have been, we've been extremely saddened by Anniston's decline. But with McClellan on the rebound, the McChemical weapons are burned, and we're hoping, hoping very, very much that the PCB issue will be resolved. We've had a lot of problems, but by and large, all Annistonians in every single ward say their number one problem is leadership. We have, we are on the cusp of turning Anniston around. We have a new horizon right over the ridge. Anniston, with, with, with my experience in business, I know what it's like to have to make payroll, I know what it's like to keep a business going. And with my 25-year teaching career, I know what it's like to see a good school and what it takes to improve our schools. If given the opportunity, I will give it my all, and I certainly hope that you will come to vote next Monday, excuse me, next Tuesday, October the 9th, for City Council, War IV, and give me that opportunity. Thank you.